Welcome to the City Council's State Session of January 15th. First, we have two items on the agenda. The first item is consideration of adjournment to executive session as authorized by Oklahoma Statute Title 25 307b 3 in order to discuss the acquisition of real property for recreational purposes currently owned by the Oklahoma Department of Mental Health and Substance Abuse Services located in the vicinity of East Robinson Street and 12th Avenue Northeast and East Robinson Street and 24th Avenue Northeast and property currently owned by the University of Oklahoma along Lexington Avenue between Flood Avenue and Haley Avenue and as authorized by Oklahoma Statute Title 25 307b 4 to discuss possible litigation associated with the University North Park Increment Finance District. I need a motion to adjourn in a special session?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those favors say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? We are adjourned.
All right, the acquisition of real property for recreational purposes currently owned by the Oklahoma Department of Mental Health and Substance of Youth Services located in the vicinity of East Robinson Street and 12th Avenue Northeast and property currently owned by the University of Oklahoma along Lexington Avenue between Flood Avenue and Holly Avenue. We're discussing executive session. No action was taken and no votes were cast. So I'd make a motion that we adjourn back into regular session.
Second to me.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, our second item is discussion regarding the project timelines for the senior center, the multisport facility, and into our aquatic center.
Thank you. From Judd Foster, Parks Intercreation, and we've got other staff and the ADG here to answer any other questions too. But what I wanted to do is go through a projected or potential timeline for the three projects that you mentioned. Most of my discussion will be on this slide, but we have a couple more slides that get into a little more information about some of the items. I'll try not to be too repetitive, but what we're showing here, first of all, is accommodation of the indoor aquatic and indoor multisport facility as one project. It's more than likely, well, it will make sense, we think, to combine them into one project, possibly under one roof, and because we think there's some savings to achieve there, possibly sharing some of the facilities, whether that be a restroom or locker room or something like that. But we will approach this as though those are one project and the senior center is a separate project on the same site. So first of all, as far as the timeline goes, of course, you know, we've been working on land acquisition for some time. Hopefully, that is near a resolution. And assuming that that is all secured in the next 30 days or so, we think this timeline could work. That would mean that that acquisition would occur in the very near future, which we would follow with some due diligence on the site. We have not been given permission to access the site yet, and there are some things that I'll get into in another slide too. But there are some due diligence items that need to be done at the existing building and on the site itself. So we would start the due diligence right away, and then we think that that all can be accomplished by the end of the summer and possibly sooner than that. Another thing that's that is teed up and ready to go is the selection of the design team. We did requested proposals several months ago and have shortlisted design teams down to six. They're waiting for an invitation to come and interview, so we can start that at any time. We think we could do get through the interviews, negotiate a contract, and have a contract in front of council for consideration by the end of March. I think that would, that timeframe would work, possibly a little sooner there as well. In every case here, we would, you know, we think these are reasonable times and possibly times that could be beaten. As soon as, another thing that would start, we think should start right away, is discussions with potential operator facilities. We've talked about the YMCA as an example. And we know that our counterparts in Edmund, that city of Edmund and the YMCA and Edmund Schools took about a year to get through their operating agreement. So it's, we're anticipating that at least to, or potentially that amount of time to get that worked out. So that should begin soon as well. We also have other operating partners, and I'm going to come back to that as well. But then, so going back to, we get the firm selected.
Councilmember Mierman, if they got a question?
I just, yeah, I wanted to know, why are we looking at a year each to design, you know, the indoor aquatic center, multisport, and, you know, and the senior center?
It's all concurrent. I'm coming to that.
Okay.
That's all happening at the same time.
Okay, great.
So, once we would get a contract with a design firm, then we would, the council would put an ad hoc group in place. Here again is an opportunity, we think, instead of two five-member ad hoc groups, one for the aquatics and one for the multisport, might make sense to combine those into one larger group instead of a five-member group, maybe a nine-member group, for example, have adequate representation on all the components, and probably could streamline the process a little bit. But that group would would start as soon as the design team is in place and would remain engaged till the end of the project. Now, we're showing the first step in design is a master plan or a site plan for this site, the 14-acre site east of the YMCA we're looking at, and how do all three of these facilities fit on that site? What do they look like on the site plan and parking and drainage and all of that? So we're allowing six months to complete that master plan. That possibly could happen a little quicker, but six months is pretty reasonable, I think. Then following that would be the detailed design of the construction documents of the facilities, and we see that be potentially a year. Here again, we're comparing a pretty similar scope in facilities to the Mitch Park facility, the YMCA and pool, and they took just under a year to design it and just under two years to build it up there. So we think these are reasonable expectations.
Councilmember Scott, have questions?
Do we have anybody in-house who could design these facilities, or is it going to be design bid? Is there going to be a bidding process after or before?
A bidding process after the design. We're, the design work.
We're going to contract the design out to a company?
Yes, ma'am.
And then, but they won't be the ones to build it?
Correct. We'll do a construction manager approach or a contractor. That's one of those two options, but a contractor will oversee the construction of the project.
And if you think about the design of these, because we're dealing with such a variety of facilities here, these are, these are teams. So these are firms that specialize in certain areas that have come together as one firm. And as Judd mentioned, construction manager at risk is a model we think might be very beneficial in this case because we can face some of the construction elements in it.
Cool. I have a follow-up?
Yes.
Okay. Will we be able to give some input as to what we'd like to see out of the buildings? Like lead certification, 100% renewable, storm shelters onsite?
Of course.
Just like, that's what I'd like to see.
The ad hoc groups have a lot of say in that process as well.
Okay, so the ad hoc groups will be, have some input, and then we can also have input?
Likely, when you bring these teams online, we would have some type of scoping session with them to talk about the expectations. And if council would like, we could, we could have a study session or a conference where we might set some, might give us some feedback on your expectations. We take that to the team to kind of set the course because that will drive the budget, obviously, when we start talking about those elements.
Yeah, while we're working on the design and the public art, and again, because I think we all love Kate's idea, I'd like to see them focus on the public art. And I know we're not the Norman Arts Council, but even in like a square-type concept, because that would be easier to, does that make sense? It'd be different if you have, yeah, plaza between them. So as we're envisioning the master plan, because I think.
True.
It's a cool idea.
Yeah, glad you mentioned that. We didn't put art in this timeline. It would, it would fit into the timeline to finish at the same time construction finished. We have met recently with Arts Council and talked about potential timelines, and they're going, they would back up how long it would take to go through the process to solicit proposals and do a selection and then creation or building the piece. And that would be yet another colored bar on this piece because that's a separately funded item, funded separately out of Norman Forward, but not out of the project cost.
Councilmember Carter?
You might have said it, and I missed it, and I apologize. So firm selection, will that just be one firm to oversee all three projects?
Potentially.
Potentially.
I was going to say that the Aquatic Center and the, and the multisport, we think for sure.
For sure.
Potentially all three. And in fact, our request for proposals that we did, that people responded to, we indicated you should set your team up that, that we could do all three if needed or if wanted, desired that way.
I don't know, but it will just depend on how the buildings fall and so.
So all of the, another way to say what I just did is the, all of the teams that are shortlisted have a senior center design component on their team.
They do. They all do.
Or experience in that kind of facilities.
And I will say that the finalists, we were pleasantly surprised by all the submittals we had. We had excellent nationwide firms submit.
So then, we get through the design process. That takes us to the fall of 2020, and then we start, immediately start construction. We've allowed 18 months. That may be a little aggressive, but it's doable. And then we finish the pool and the gym project in the spring of 22, 2022. Concurrent with that construction would also be any infrastructure work, and that's, again, that's funded separately. It's a separate Norman Forward project, but work on the roads, work on drainage, any of those kinds of activities and improvements would be concurrent with this construction so that it would be done either before or at the same time as the building work. Then moving to the senior center, again, we've already kind of covered this, but potentially they're happening all by the same team at the same time. But we see many of the items as the same, that obviously the due diligence on the site is, happens at the same time for both, all three facilities. The selection of the team would be the same, the ad hoc group would be the same, only it would just last through the, the end of the construction of the senior center. We see that as a separate building, potentially. It could be attached, but it's probably a separate building to the other two, and could therefore, we think, be finished sooner. That construction could be completed sooner than the other two. So again, about a year to design it and about a year to build it and to do the infrastructure work.
Councilmember Mierman, have a question?
That kind of brings me back to my original question is, can you explain why it would take a full year to design each of these facilities if there's already a master plan? Because I'm going to get questions about it. Like, why is it going to take a whole year to come up with a plan?
I'll be happy to take part of that if you want to, Judd. Is, if you think about a recent project that we did do master planning on, that's maybe not of this scope and size, but in a different building, like the Central Library, we actually began the design prior, we had a master plan in that. That project took three and a half years to design and complete construction. So a year is, and then again, as Judd, and Judd may want to, you know, volunteer, as you mentioned earlier, when we think about similar projects like in Edmund, they, they took about a year to design. And when we think about our ad hoc groups who we have to, you know, gather input and council gathering input at the 65% mark as we've been doing, those, those add a little bit to the timeline, important parts, but the things we have to think through.
Yeah, we're allowing a lot of time, extra time for public input on these, in the design process.
Okay, so that's really the motivator behind that. Because I'm going to get some questions, and I'm going to want to be able to explain why it's going to take, you know, 12 calendar months to, you know, put together a design.
These are very detailed documents that just take a long time to, to prepare so that someone can bid on the construction of them. Maybe ADG wants to add something to that, I don't know, but generally, that's what, that's what time it's going to take.
Councilmember Carter?
Judd, do you see two separate ad hoc groups, one for the lifestyle, or is this going to be one for the senior center?
Yes, sir. And the senior group is already, already exists.
Yeah.
You're not going to try and blend those groups together?
Pardon me?
You're not going to blend, try and blend those groups?
I don't think so. I think they're two totally separate.
Yeah.
Facilities, and input is totally separate.
Yeah. But we may envision a scenario where as we work through the master planning phase, we could see maybe some joint meetings between the senior ad hoc group and the indoor facilities group. We work through all that collectively.
Talking about common areas and things like that.
Very good point. Okay. Okay, and due diligence, we, again, I apologize, I won't repeat too much. We've covered a lot of these things already, but we'll have to do a phase one. to do a Phase One environmental assessment on the site. We have no idea what's, what's underground out there, um, and what the, uh, uh, Navy Base did or put there or left there. Uh, hopefully nothing. But, uh, but anyway, we'll have to check that, uh, test that and also, um, uh, inside the building. And that, we had, we'd actually requested access to the building a long time ago and it just hasn't been granted, but, um, the building's built in the 40s or early 50s or, I think 40s and there's probably, there's a chance there's asbestos in it. And again, we don't, won't know that until we test it, but we certainly have to test it and then, um, uh, deal with it if it is there. There's a certain process that has to be followed for that, as you know. So we'll, we'll go through those, um, items. Anything else that might get discovered in these processes, we'll, we'll deal with, um, in this six-month timeframe that we've set aside for due diligence at the site. Um, other things, um, again, we've mentioned these briefly already, but, um, the roads and the infrastructure, the drainage, um, all those are budgeted separately, accounted for separately and, and funded in Norman Forward without using these project funds. Um, the, uh, timing of those and, and all of that would be, um, done along with the master plan or some of that, um, assessment, at least at the beginning, uh, would be part of the master plan work or timeframe.
Councilman Hickman.
I just would like to say, I think it's important, and I'm going to talk a little bit to Sean here, so that we don't find ourselves in a situation kind of a little bit like with the, the Central Library where we're going to start doing the acre street intersection on Porter and the library's going to be opening and then we're going to be having road construction. I know we're getting some of that done, but I'm just saying it's important that we try to, since we're going to have a, uh, you know, the lead time and the design, you know, stuff for the facilities being constructed and done, that we also try to have the roadwork done before the facility's open. So when they open, we're not doing construction out on the, on the road to, just make sure we, we coordinate that.
And it's, as they mentioned, it's built into the master planning element. We've done some of that early on, even before the election for Norman Forward, but that's exactly our intent. Um, the infrastructure actually, in the timeline, Judd was showing you, is completed well before it was built in, I think.
But, but part of why I'm asking questions, I wasn't sure, since we don't have the land still from OU for the, um, James Garner flyover, if that piece of it is still going to be a little bit in limbo and how that might affect the roadwork associated with these, heading towards or getting into the intersection, uh, near these projects. And so.
Right. Yeah. That, that's a good point because James Garner, the northern section would be, um, running around 21, same, same time period. There, there's some land issues there on, where the water power that we haven't resolved either. Lots of work to do in that project.
So Sean, you anticipate that, would you want the road projects done before this all started or would you not because of construction?
Simultaneously.
I mean, you could, ideally, they would, that would be started beforehand, but.
And the road construction, again, just to kind of clarify, we've anticipated improvements to Lexington Drive, probably a new traffic signal at the intersection of Lexington and Flood. Um, we're hoping to be able to punch Berry Road through, be from the current terminus to Lexington, make that accessible from both south and east. And then whatever stormwater improvements might come up. This will generate a lot of additional run-ups and we have to meet our own stormwater requirements.
You anticipate that being underground storage or do you have any idea yet?
Don't know. Uh, we're, we're pretty limited on land. We've gotten enough to, to do the three facilities, what we think we do. Uh, so some of it might be in that.
Well, are they going to look at maybe, since you have these three projects, maybe kind of a, a water feature type of thing that would be a stormwater, access stormwater and a water feature, same type of thing?
And we've had long talks about what this could be, but this is at such a.
Early stage.
Location, but I think any public art or other cosmetic features are critical. So a water feature might be possible.
Any questions?
Okay. So, um, um, I mentioned the, the operational agreement, our partners that, that we've talked about before, Norman Public Schools, the Norman Regional Health System, YMCA and Senior Swim Club, they've all, prior to the election, um, talked about contributing, uh, towards the operating funds, uh, of the, of the, uh, boat well, the aquatic facility for sure. And, um, so they all need to be part of these discussions. Um, and again, as I mentioned, that probably needs to start sooner than later. It'd be good to have that, um, in place and have the operator identified and participating along in the design process. Um, we think there's a lot of, um, advantage for having that voice in the room as well. Then, um, let's see, the operation agreement, the multi-sport, oh, this, the timing completed, that would be completed prior to the, uh, design process. So it's, it's the early part of the design process, we think, makes the most sense. And then we would do a, um, uh, request for proposals for a construction manager, uh, construction manager at risk, we think, uh, is a, an opportunity for significant savings, uh, having all of those, um, parties to the, to the construction involved in the design, uh, identify savings where areas or ways to save money and, and, um, combine things and just be more efficient in the project. And so, um, that would be an early phase to get this, get the construction manager identified. Then the best way CMAR works is to have the construction manager work along with, as I just said, along with the design team.
Judd, could you, or Terry, expand on that? Just refresh us about the construction manager at risk model villain as opposed to just a, a contractor?
Um, it's a little different in that it's, you solicit their request for qualifications. So you select your, uh, construction manager as part of this. And I also may lean on ADG with their experience as well. As you know, the, uh, Westwood Tennis Facility is being delivered by that model. Um, and that is, I think, our first kind of foray into, that is a city. But you would, you essentially get a chance to select, in some respects, your general contractor, the person who's responsible for coordinating the efforts. The idea would be is if you had them early in the design phase, you could really have a discussion with the architect about constructability. Uh, and then one of the other benefits is, is that you bid the project in just different packages in the project. So it may just be the grading plans that are bid, and then the city would be responsible for those bids. The contracts would be held by the city, but those solicitations would be in pieces instead of just one lump to do everything. You could, and, and this is one of the, we think one of the areas where it will be beneficial is when you have one construction manager at risk, you could bid, um, select packages such as the grading at one time. So you would grade the entire site. That, that package may go out, out ahead of the full design of the building being done, but you've already sped up your timeline by doing that. Um, so between those, those, but really, I guess, the, the, essentially, the simple way to explain is it's a way to select your, uh, your general contractor on a qualification basis versus taking the low bid and then trying to figure out what was missed in the bid or what wasn't missed in the bid, or if you have a quality contractor. We also think that's important because, uh, we want to select firms with experience with these facilities. Uh, not every general contractor you get may have built an indoor aquatic facility before. So can we acquire the, the team that we need to, to pull these projects off successfully?
So do you anticipate you might have a construction manager for the Aquatic Center different than the Senior Center? Or would it just be one person of all three of them? Do you mind one different experiences for?
We think, we, we, we think with the size of this project, we would be able to acquire the construction management firms large enough that could handle all the projects. And there's probably a lot of, a lot of, um, benefit to doing that because they can think about the project holistically as far as the bidding and, and their relationships with particular vendors. But we think that that's highly likely we could acquire firms that could have a pool of firms to select from that could do that with just one, an instruction manager.
So let me ask you, from a responsibility standpoint, and we've talked about, you know, having them, having the contractor manager involved in, in the process. And so, missing something. So when they come back to us for a change order, say, you know what, it wasn't the architect, wasn't the plans, we didn't realize we're going to have to do this. Is this where you can say, now, wait a minute, you were involved in this. Don't tell me that we missed it. You missed it, right? No?
Good question. Um, not sure how to answer that. The, um, there's less of a chance that that happens in CMR, CMR, with the CMR approach. Um, our, our change orders are not nearly as, as frequent, um, with, with the tennis project, for example, as they are in some of the other projects. Um.
I don't know. Anytime you build something, you, you've got those issues, but.
Right, right.
I think if you have the person who's going to build it involved in the design of things, say, wait a minute, that, that, we can't do that. That doesn't work. Or you say, wait a minute, we talked to you about this. You said it was okay.
Yeah.
And so don't come back and tell me that you want a change order for this.
That, that's where you eliminate some of that. By having them work together, that's where you eliminate some of those things from happening and, and you eliminate a lot of those change orders. Now, if something really does get missed and we have to add it, then we're going to have to pay for it. But, uh, the chances of it happening are less if all of those people are working together to design.
Or there, there occasionally is an opportunity where the owner has an addition to something we wanted to add after the fact. You know, we thought that a certain upgrade was beneficial for whatever reason, whether that was an ADA issue or a variety of issues. We wanted to add it. Okay. And in those cases, but yes, it greatly reduces those.
And another point that I would add too is that, uh, it's still a very competitive, um, bidding process. So the, the construction manager, um, opens and we're there, uh, to have bid openings for all these various components. And, um, they're evaluated and it's, you know, it's selected based on price as well as everything else, but, um, it is a very competitive and, and, um, public process.
So are you anticipating, because of scope of this project, there's going to be national firms that work on that? Is there somewhere in a contract that we can encourage or preferential treatment to local contractors, whether it be the grading work or the cement work or, or how does that? I mean, I know we still have to go through the bid process, but.
I, I think the answer is yes. I think we can say some, add some local preference in there. But I don't want to misspeak.
Anytime you competitively bid something, the goal is to choose the lowest and best bid. And so you can define what that is. You wouldn't want that to outweigh the cost or other factors greatly, but it can be something you consider.
The council member had a question.
I know when we did the design on the animal shelter or solicited architectural firms, as I recall, you know, homie to, it's a long time ago, but there was like a, in the selection formula, you know, there was experience, there was, you know, all these factors and one, and they were weighted. I remember seeing this scale where 20% this, 20, and maybe 10% favorability to a local architectural firm, for example. And I think in, in the end, what they ended up doing is using a national, uh, design firm that was an expert in animal shelters and also combining that with a local firm. Those guys, they've got, those guys got together and made a bid and they were the, because then they got the preferential.
Right.
Local component to that. So.
Very common.
Yeah. That's part of what we'll be doing as well.
And when we, yes, sir. And when we see the, the, the various proposals, the teams that have been shortlisted, uh, I, I can't remember for sure exactly all of them, but many of them, if not all of them, have a local member, somebody local on their team. And they, they do that intentionally.
Oh, that helps because you have a man oversight component of an architectural firm during the construction phase. And if that person's in town and can go down there if an issue comes up versus having to fly in, it seems like to me that helps.
Councilmember.
Uh, so speaking of the animal shelter, um, I want to be sure when we're putting out these bids or if we can somehow structure it in these agreements, uh, we've been having some serious problems with the animal shelter. The roof has been leaking. We have serious issues with HVAC system. Uh, and I want to be sure, being as, this is kind of the first Norman Forward project that I get to be a part of right from the very beginning, I want to be sure that we don't fall into some of those same traps with these future projects. Um, some of the issues were with some of the subcontractors. So if that's something that we need to build into, you know, the CMAR contract, uh, to really provide some better oversight of the subcontractors that are used and the quality of the work being done. Um, because the issues with the animal shelter are going to cost us hundreds of thousands of dollars to fix. And I don't want to go through that again. And frankly, I don't want to use any of those same contractors or subcontractors that we used when projects like that don't turn out the way they're supposed to. So I just, I just want to put that out there. I don't know how we can build those mechanisms into these agreements. I'm going to leave that up to you guys, but I think we need to because, you know, we have a, a shelter that is only a couple of years old and we have, we have mold growing in our anesthesia machine because our HVAC system is functioning so poorly and we have no way to dehumidify the space anymore. So I just want to be sure that, you know, we're learning from these past experiences and making sure that we don't fall into those same traps again, especially with brand-new Norman Forward projects.
Catherine, could you address, um, her concern about what have, if we have a local con, any contractor and they perform poorly, can we blacklist them? Can we check mark them?
Well, I would.
I mean legally, I mean, what's our?
I wouldn't recommend blacklisting necessarily, but I, I do, and we, we were moving to this in a lot of our contracts, uh, setting out some evaluation criteria in the specifications with the bid so that when we evaluate these bids, we're defining what's best because it's not just the lowest bidder, it's lowest and best. So we're putting criteria in there that helps us determine that. And I think that helps limit our liability if we don't choose the low bidder and they want to challenge that. I think that helps us to have those criteria.
Can we come back and say, hey, you've worked on a project for us in the past and you didn't perform well?
We're building lengthier warranties for some of, for some of these things because it's not always going to be readily apparent in six months or a year or 18 months that we've had some shoddy or insufficient work done. You know, it might take two or three years and I still want to be able to hold them responsible if anything happens.
Something that helps with that with Norman Forward is having ADG to help lead groups on the ground as the project is constructed. That's been really helpful. And that's another set of eyes. That's another group that's looking at the project and looking at construction. And that, that's really been helpful on these projects and they will continue.
They also do plan review as well. So, so there's layers upon layers. And that's where some of the benefit of program management comes in as we think about the bond package and other things.
Appreciate the clarification. Councilman Hickman.
Uh, I don't go too far down this road. I'm just curious if we, in my, one of my prior lives, I was a government contracting officer and we would always consider past performance. And I was oftentimes one of the people as the contracting officer that would have to fill out the form on a contractor and a vendor has to do their performance. And it would go into a pool that if, if someone was bidding at, you know, an Air Force Base in Honolulu, they could find out, okay, they did work at Tink Air Force Base. I'm going to call that Captain Hickman guy up and say, how did those guys do? And my evaluation could go into ultimately whether or not they got a job someplace else. I don't know if we do any kind of internal, uh, tracking of performance. So if somebody bids again on a project that we have the way to say, they did work here five years ago and, you know, the public works department said they were horrible. And we could then say, they may be the cheapest, but we're not going to use them again because of these reasons.
We're working on that with ADG. They're developing some systems with the Norman Public Schools that do that very thing. And we're working on that.
That's also part of our new software.
Okay, as well. Well, great. Well, I'm glad to hear that. So.
That, that would be really helpful to save us some money down the road from not using people that do poor work again. And the second part of that is do we know, when we have people bidding, that, do we have the ability, maybe having experts like ADG, that we could call other cities, like other air force bases would call me and say, hey, you guys use these people for like your project in Edmund or whatever. How did they do? And before we hire?
Yeah, we require references typically from all those entities. A lot of times they're contractors that are known, uh, for certain projects around town or in the metroplex.
So we'll lean on their experiences there.
Okay.
And defining best, low and bad.
Okay. And we will have air conditioning in the senior center, correct? We will have air conditioning in the senior center?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay.
We'll also look into commissioning the buildings. This is some stuff we've done with the libraries and so forth, where we have a third party that actually commissions the buildings. It's part of lead certifications, but it also helps with other just elements of operations, whether it's quality and there's a lot of metrics behind it.
Councilmember Clark.
Last question for me, since we're looking at the new senior center standalone, Generation Square. What are we going to do with the old senior center?
Great question. We need to have that discussion and, and come up with some ideas. There's lots of ideas floating around out there.
Norman History Museum.
Oh, I, I just feel like.
That could be a whole nother conversation.
As long, maybe that could be in the timeline somewhere as we're building, we have that similar conversation.
Great.
I don't want to scare you.
This is a historic building. It's on the state historic preservation list.
Right. Any other questions or comments from the council?
That's what I think about every building.
All right. So any other questions, comments? Um, means a jerk.
All right. So any other questions, comments? Means adjourn.
Don't forget two more things.
No. We have two more things to talk about.
I like, I like
So much for your official meeting.
There's a second page. We're saving, we're saving trees by putting on the back. I didn't see that. I'm sorry.
Exactly.
All right. Since there was, so second to my motion to adjourn, we'll go on to item three.
I was there, man.
This, discussion regarding vegetation management in the city right of way.
Right. As Richard was presenting during the CPTC this afternoon, I thought, what timing. He's talking about these beautiful street trees in the right of way. And we're talking about some of the same issues. So this discussion began last summer, late summer, early fall, maybe 2017 now, not 2018, when we started talking about potential amendments to the OG&E franchise. Some of the issues we kept hearing about are, you know, property owners want to know when the utilities are coming out, and what chemicals are they using, and why are they cutting down the trees, all those kind of things. So I'm going to review a little bit of what I did with CPTC last spring with the full council, just to go over the existing state and federal regulations, because we have to operate within that framework. And, and that really informs the, the approach we took with the ordinance. I will say that since this effort began, I've been working with gentlemen from OG&E and OEC, who are in the back, and probably don't want to be pointed out, but they're back there. It's been a great effort. And I know that they've been working with the folks in our Public Works Department as well, to ensure that we're communicating really well about when work is being done, and how we can get that information out to our residents and be prepared to answer questions. Because the first thing a resident does is call the city typically and say, what's going on in my yard? So that has been a really good effort.
No, thanks, Mark.
So just briefly, the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission has operated for a number of years under the Federal Power Act, which just regulated certain economic aspects of public utilities. I didn't really get into how they operate beyond economics. That was expanded in 2005, and they started talking more about electric grid reliability. And so now their jurisdiction extends to all users, owners, and operators of the power system, except facilities that are used only in local distribution. And so they oversee the large transmission lines we see through Norman, which aren't just OG&E and OEC, but maybe other rural electric cooperatives and other entities that have these lines. And so they have regulations related to vegetation management that all of those utilities have to follow. And that requires that they manage vegetation to ensure that encroachments into what they call the minimum vegetation clearance distance of lines are prevented. The distance from the line depends on the line voltage, but they are required to cut some of that vegetation back, depending on the line. They have to do inspections of their lines for vegetation each year. And they have to do an annual work plan, and they have to complete 100% within that year. Corporation Commission also regulates utilities, not only just for rates, but for rules affecting services, operations, management, and the conduct of business. There's a case out there that says that rules promulgated, promulgated by the OCC prevail over city ordinances, whether it's rate setting, regulation of day-to-day affairs, specifically where the activity under consideration affects directly or indirectly the duty to repair, maintain, or install its equipment. The Corporation Commission is also focused on reliability. So each utility must have a reliability program that limits the frequency and duration of interruptions in service, and requires them to maintain acceptable reliability levels and sustain them over time. And so they're looking at things like the age, distribution, and location of equipment on each circuit, how many customers you have on the circuits, the location and the density of the trees on the system. They want an annual vegetation plan, and the impact on the distribution system reliability of animals, wind, storms, ice, auto accidents, things like that. And so that's also what the utilities are looking at. They do have specific vegetation management rules. They define vegetation management as all activities associated with the trimming, removal, or control of plant material in the proximity of energized electric utility conductors and equipment. It's all, as I said, targeted at reliability. And when they submit their plans to the Corporation Commission for review, they have to include what they're doing, when they're doing it, how they're going to implement it, how are they going to assess success, and who at the company is familiar with the plan and can answer questions. They have to perform vegetation management on a four-year cycle and track all of those costs. They do require reasonable notice to, a reasonable attempt to contact the landowner, customer, or tenant a minimum of 24 hours in advance in urban areas. Rural areas are a little bit different. Reasonable attempt, a reasonable time in advance. This can be done by written notice, telephone call, in person. And then they have to make a reasonable effort to accommodate a landowner, customer, or tenant's request to be present during the work. If, if it's an emergency repair situation, no notice required. Get out there and fix, fix the problem.
I hesitate to ask, but is there any definition for emergency?
No, I don't think so. And you'll see in our ordinance, we, we carry some of this over too. But it does distinguish between dangerous trees for emergency. And I think emergency is probably more typically lines down, you know, things like that.
The interruption service type thing?
Yeah. I mean, it's all focused on reliability. So I think services downs, we had a car wreck, I don't know how many months ago, near, near here, that knocked right into a big transformer box, I think, and knocked out electricity. That, I think, would have been an emergency because it cut off electricity, and they had to reroute service. So as far as chemical application goes, the Department of Agriculture really governs that, and it's found in Title II of the Oklahoma statutes. And they explicitly preempt us from any ordinance rule or regulation that is more stringent than the rules of their board regarding advertising, posting, training, storage, product composition, all of those things. And so they regulate pesticides and licensed pesticides specifically for right-of-way maintenance and ground line treatment of utility poles. So there's not a lot we can do in that area, unfortunately. And I'll show you in a minute what we put in the ordinance. So the first thing in the proposed ordinance, and this has been discussed since April, I think, in CPTC. We've gone back and forth probably four times, three or four times. We want to ensure cooperation between the city and the utilities. And as I said, there's already better cooperation occurring. We're, we're in good communication with them about things that are happening. They're going to give us information to tell us what areas they're scheduling for planned maintenance. They'll identify a certified arborist as a contact person. This helps us when citizens call the action line to be able to say, here's the person you need to call if you have questions. And they'll identify any contractors to be used.
Councilman Hickman?
On that slide, you talk about them identifying a certified arborist, and this makes me think that we've had conversations about hiring a forester because of the expertise associated with being a forester. Where do we stand on getting that person hired? Because it seems like that would be the person who would be our natural contact at the city, potentially in implementing this ordinance or coordinating with the, the utility companies or whoever's doing this work.
Madam Manager, go ahead.
Actually, the city council has not authorized that position, or appropriated any funds for that position at this time. So we, that's kind of in a holding pattern until we get the tree ordinance passed. And probably at that point in time, where it may be a request in the regular budget process. We're fast approaching that. I'm taking Anthony here.
Well, what happened to the request to look into either reprogramming the auditor position, since we're not changing the charter right now, and/or looking at, you know, how much it was going to cost to have the forester compared to the auditor, or editing it at midterm?
It's on the Finance Committee meeting, four o'clock, Thursday.
That's it.
And what's the timeline to see the tree ordinances?
We are getting that into ordinance format and, and finding a place for it in the code. So I think in February, those will be coming forward.
Thank you.
Okay. So notice to owners and residents of property. They've got to have prior notification, door hangers, mail letters, posted signs, et cetera. If a property owner or resident wants to meet to get more information about the maintenance that's planned, there's a requirement that they be willing to, to meet with the property owner. Notice provisions are waived in the event of an emergency. But they do have to give just as much as reasonable and possible, given the type of emergency. If it's a dangerous tree, they don't have to provide notice to the city, but they still have to provide reasonable notice to the owner or resident.
Councilmember?
So one thing I'm seeing on here is that I'm seeing that we are requesting, I guess, maybe, because we haven't finalized this yet, that the utility identify contractors to be used to the city. I think that it would probably be prudent to also have the utility be sure that any contractors they are using have identifiable information to the residents.
And that is in, on page three of the ordinance. That was something we added after the last CPTC meeting.
It's like, I feel like we talked about that.
It's especially important, given the robbery that happened a couple of weeks ago with some claimant to be a utility worker. So we are requiring that they produce that upon request of any property owner or resident, show their identification.
I actually think that they, it should be visible without request. Like, if you have, if you have a white pickup truck with equipment, just as an example, slowly rolling down a street, you know, I feel like it would be prudent to have something on the vehicle displaying that this is a contractor for OG&E or a contractor for OEC. That way, someone doesn't have to approach someone that they might be concerned about to ask for identification. I don't think we should even have to get to that point. I think that that identification should be visible clearly.
I agree with that. That was what I, what I had intended. Somebody's vehicle's out front, and they're tearing up your yard. You should be able to take a picture of that truck or something and see what names on it.
So tell you, if I'm home alone with my daughter, there's no way I'm bringing her outside to approach a strange person and ask what they're doing in my front yard. Yeah.
Catherine, is there any way we can make that work? I'm just thinking about technology and the future type stuff, you know, where, make that broad enough that it allows for, you know, sometimes you can, you can contact, hey, they're coming out, and they've got a, they don't necessarily have a badge, but they've got, you know, you can track when they're coming. And through technology, I'm not sure that we necessarily have to have Uber.
I had it recently on a plumber.
Yeah.
I could see what they're coming.
You can see exactly when they're coming. And you'll know that that is somebody who's supposed to be there.
I don't know if the, the companies have that.
I know. But I want to make sure that our ordinance allows for that technology to be there as opposed to, no, I'm sorry. Nope. The ordinance says you've got to have a name badge, and you've got to have a truck.
They should have a name badge in a truck anyway.
Yeah. And I think definitely OG&E and OEC employees do. I think it's just more of an issue of contractors, what they have.
They're always a little sketchy.
I'm going to move.
Just a statement here, because where I see, and this is to our friends in the back of the room from the utility companies, I just want to share with my experience, you know, with, here in Norman, is this willingness to meet if requested is where I see a big hole. I constantly get barraged during the tree pruning cycle from constituents that they have no communication, no say, there's no oversight of the pruning and tree trimming process, no one's there that they feel like is experienced enough to make the proper decisions on how that's done properly. And I think fundamentally, you know, we've got two problems in Oklahoma. One is that there is no, since 1991, no ability to create a new city utility. So there's no threat of competition for local utility companies. And there's also no, they in effect have monopolies on their business. So there's no threat of competition, say, like, for example, in Texas, where you could choose your electricity provider. And so there's a, there's a, there's an incentive for taking care of the customer. That's a little, the bar's a little bit higher when there's increased competition. You know, what we do see is we see millions and millions of dollars in feel-good ads from OG&E and OEC, you know, about all the things to make us feel good about them. But what we see a lack of is a lack of, of direct, on-the-ground communication with homeowners when they're doing things on their properties. And that's what spawned the concern about vegetation and the problems with trees.
Well, that's one of the reasons we wanted them to provide the name of a certified arborist. So we have a contact person. A lot of times, it's more when we have contractors out, maybe you just have the tree crew out, and, and they're not prepared to answer those kind of questions. But we need to have the right person to point them to. And so that's why we asked for that information as part of the ordinance, so that we would be able to connect people. Because we get those calls too. I know Brenda can attest the action line. And I think Public Works probably gets a lot of calls too. They get very busy with, when vegetation management activities are happening. So if we can start pointing them to the right person, I think they'll get better results.
Thank you. Councilman Wilson?
I mean, to Dr. Carter's point is, we have no recourse. If they don't do any of these things, we don't have any recourse on this. Not, this is not like, come on, Catherine, give us some recourse. But I'm just like, I, I don't even know.
With the rules in place, with the Corporation Commission.
Complain to the Corporation Commission as a city?
They look at those things for OG&E. OEC is not subject to those rules. Rural electric cooperatives operate under a different statutory's framework. But it is difficult because there, there are so many overlapping areas of preemption when you get in with the electric utilities.
Councilman Hickman?
But if we do this as a local ordinance, we'll be able to enforce our ordinance. And we're not going beyond the scope of what we're allowed to from a federal or state law perspective. Like, for example, with OEC, since they're not subject to the Corporation Commission rules, you know, won't we have the power to enforce our ordinance? So I guess is what I'm getting at.
Yes. Yeah. And we don't have penalties because, you know, municipal court charges don't seem to be really the right way to, you know, you're charging a contractor out there, he's just doing what he was told. It wouldn't be code enforcement necessarily. It would have to be some other, probably civil enforcement procedure if we were really having problems.
So the city could bring in a civil action against somebody pursuant to this, this ordinance? I mean, there, I guess my point is that there is a, the city would have the power to enforce this ordinance.
I think so. I think it's unlikely we would have to go that far. I think, you know, if we get to that point, I think we're going to come out and, and do what they need to do, just based on my conversations with the
No, I, I know. I understand. I'm just saying, I want people to understand that the city does have the power to enforce its ordinance.
Yeah. Just like we would any other ordinance. It doesn't have criminal penalties, so we'd have to take another avenue, but.
So, so what is our shtick? I mean, we can enforce it to what extent? We slap their hand? We tell them, hey, do better next time? Or we throw you in jail? I mean, what, what's our?
Probably not jail. You know, if we could go through the steps of doing a civil enforcement action, I'm not sure what we could get out of that in terms of, you know, fines or anything like that. I'm not sure we're empowered to do those things.
Just a court order to comply?
Yeah. I mean, we could try something like that. I'd have to look into that and see what that, that would look like. But I think probably what we would end up getting is, is some pushback, because a lot of these things we're, we're doing because we have cooperation, we're able to do. We're duplicating what the Corporation Commission does in many respects.
It sounds like it's kind of a customer service ordinance, to a certain extent.
Yeah. I mean,
But there could be other entities besides OEC and OG&E doing work in our right of way.
Yeah, this would apply to all utilities.
Could be a cable company, or it could be
Yeah.
Anybody.
AT&amp;T was trimming trees on, along Lindsay that were in their lines just a few weeks ago. Yeah. It would apply to AT&amp;T and, and others. The electric companies have the strongest case for preemption because of all the OCC rules and the federal rules and, and those kind of things. Telecommunications are looked at a little bit differently, but they still have a strong preference at the FCC for telecommunications and expanding services. And so I, there's likely to be some pushback from those type of utilities too, I would think, if we go too far. I think what we've got now is reasonable.
Does this mean anybody operating in the right of way?
It just applies to utilities.
Okay.
Yeah. And so what we've done, we've created some best management practices, and this adopts what's called the ANSIA 300 standards. Those were created by arborists. They're all about pruning and how to do it the right way. And so those standards are incorporated explicitly to make sure you're not doing damage to the tree, and that you're, you're doing only what's, what's necessary. The chemical control methods, as I said, article or Title II in the Oklahoma statutes, preempts us pretty heavily on that and pretty clearly. So what we've got in here is that they're going to have to use them according to the product label and the approved application standards. And then they need to consider conditions like temperature, winds, sensitive vegetation in the conditions like temperature, winds, sensitive vegetation in the immediate area, and intertwining root systems when applying any herbicide, and do their utmost to avoid off-target damage. A lot of what I've heard is, you know, they've gone out there and sprayed, and now my crepe myrtle's dead, and, you know, maybe it's gone beyond what, what they, what you would reasonably think they should, they would be doing. And so we just incorporated those standards from the Agriculture Department Act regulations.
Councilmember Wilson, do you have a hand up?
Well, vegetation cleanup, because my experience recently was that they came in and sprayed and then left all the brown stuff from, in my area, it's a huge fire hazard, so.
And they actually have federal rules, and I didn't have that in the presentation, about fire hazards too. So they, they do have to come back and mitigate any fire hazards. And I'll get a little bit to that cleanup in just a second. We've also got in here supervision and oversight of contractors. And so if they're using contractors, they've got to be responsible for, for the oversight. If it's an identification issue, they've got to communicate that, communicate these rules to those contractors. We already talked about identification. Then on cleanup, we've treated pruning cleanup and chemical control cleanup differently. We had some feedback at the last CPTC meeting about chemical control, especially. In here, for any pruning or any other waste generated from clearance work that'll be disposed of in compliance with applicable laws, if it's chemicals. If it's pruning debris, they will clean same day unless the property owner gives them permission to do otherwise. Clean the impacted lawn areas of debris, impacted streets and sidewalks. All brush having a diameter of six inches or less. Branches and logs will be chipped and removed from the site or blown into an area within the right-of-way if the property owner agrees. Chemicals often take a long time to work. They aren't immediate. It can be up to 90 days, I'm told. And so what we've put in here, it's not, it's not, you know, reasonable for them to come back through and do another sweep just to clean up. But they will come back if, if a property owner requests that. They will come back and clean it up. And so if someone doesn't want, you know, the dead vegetation, if it's bothering them, once it's dead, all them within, you know, four months of them spraying it, and they will come back out and clean that up. They do have to watch those for fire risk also. So they're, they've always got that in mind as well. So they're, they're required to do some, some, as I said, mitigation of that. And so with that, any other questions or feedback?
One more question. On the chemical spraying?
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
On the chemical spraying, the notice is given, the, the resident can deny that spraying?
No. No. We can't allow that under state law.
That's very disappointing, Catherine.
I think this ordinance is important because it gives our city the authority and power to enforce restrictions on the chemical spraying and the trimming, and we not have to rely upon the state or the Corporation Commission to, to do those things. But we can do them at the local level. And so I'm glad to see that we've got it scheduled to go forward here in February.
Yes.
Especially so we have it in place with the upcoming tree cleaning, yeah, the tree, the tree and chemical spraying period coming up soon.
Yeah. So we'll have that on your agenda if everyone's good with it on February 12th, the first reading, second reading, and adoption February 26th. Something else we talked about at CPTC, just keep in the back of your mind, is, is looking at tree placement. And I really hate to say this after Richard's presentation, because he showed such a beautiful string of trees right where they shouldn't be from a utility perspective. But it may be something we want to look at, just to make sure that we're not putting trees, the wrong kind of trees. I mean, it's really the kind of tree under the line and creating issues.
I think in Richard's, his are all new build areas, which are generally underground.
Right. The lines are underground in that area, but most of them, they might be full ground, but most of them do not look like super tall trees.
Catherine, will there be a differentiation between above ground or below ground type of thing? Or is it, if it doesn't apply, I guess it wouldn't?
No. I mean, their efforts are going to be focused at, at things interfering with the above ground.
But we talked about, hey, you know, you shouldn't plant in the right-of-way.
Yeah.
You say, well, I plant in the right-of-way, but everything's underground, so don't come trim my beautiful tree.
Yeah.
Even though it's, because it doesn't affect you. But when we were trimming a whole area, we want to make everything look consistent. If there was a difference.
It doesn't address that issue. I think, you know, whole neighborhoods would be underground, so I don't think, I don't think they'd be out there trimming in the right-of-way, you know, underground utilities to develop. I think our sewer line maintenance guys would tell you trees in the right-of-way are bad for them.
Sewer, yeah, yeah.
You know, that presents other issues for underground utilities like that, with roots getting into the system.
I just want to say thank you to our utility guys that have been working with the city cooperatively on this. Thank you, guys. Really appreciate it.
Jared and Cliff have been wonderful to work with. Richard's not here, but he's worked with us too. And I think we have really good relationships and good communication. I think we're in a good spot.
All right. Any other questions, comments on this item, or?
Me adjourned, right?
Nope. I'll try it one more time. Me adjourned? All right. We'll go, we'll go one more time. All right. Next item is discussion regarding residential security lighting.
Poor Jane.
Now, state sessions are not supposed to last more than an hour, so.
You advance this agenda better.
We don't have to worry about.
I got you guys. I got Alex over here.
Jane, I just wanted to mention I have something to ask you after the meeting, so don't, don't run out after the meeting.
If you would have stuck in my motion for martial law, we wouldn't have this problem.
We could do that, you could take over as mayor.
That was my plan.
I think that's in the charter. I'm, I'm down for it. Jane?
Good evening, everyone. It's hard to believe that we were here in November, but it's November 29th, we were before community planning and transportation discussing the residential outdoor lighting. So we're bringing that back tonight. There was an ordinance attached in your packet. As I mentioned at the last meeting, the zoning ordinance does have a lighting ordinance. However, it only is for the commercial outdoor lighting. And so now we're looking at what we can do for the residential portion. So the current draft ordinance sets a standard for security lighting and floodlights, and it's for those lights that spread light 360 degrees. At the previous meeting, there was an additional portion that's, that's no longer in this ordinance, and it was referring to the requirement of the full cutoff fixtures in the residential area. We've taken that out because there was concern expressed about, you know, garage door lights, porch lights, you know, any of the accent lighting that people are putting up on their residential properties. Those really won't be an impact typically unless someone puts some crazy floodlight in it, and then we'd have to look at it. But really, this is looking at those security lights, floodlights that people would be putting up in their yard that would spread light beyond the property boundaries in an obtrusive or offensive manner. So as outlined in the zoning, in the ordinance itself, the purpose and intent, of course, is to define practical and effective measures by which we can help control some of that spillover on the adjacent residential properties. The section applies to properties zoned or used for single-family and two-family dwellings. So this will apply to the Center City Form Base Code, if we'd wanted to ask about that as well. And then under.
Are you killing us by opening that, are you? So I'm pretty sure that the post office has already checked it. Sorry.
So under number three, the residential outdoor lighting, security lighting, floodlight standards, they shall be installed in the residential zones in such a manner as to avoid casting or creating offensive or obtrusive light or glare on any adjoining or nearby property, and shall be shielded or otherwise limited in direction to protect the adjacent property owners. This is on a complaint basis, as we talked about before, so we wouldn't be talking to anyone unless we do get a complaint from an adjacent property owner. And then at that point, you know, code would visit with the individual and let them know what the method of shielding to protect the adjacent property owner would be. And if, if they don't agree with that, then they would be able to appeal to Board of Adjustment. And there are violations and penalties attached to it. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have about it.
Councilmember Hickman?
I was going to say, Jane, I think you guys have done a great job, you and staff and your offices and the legal staff, in crafting something that's, you know, narrowly tailored, but addresses a concern that I think several of us have heard from residents about light pollution or neighborly conduct, and give us a way to where we can help resolve neighborly issues that when they can't resolve it themselves, when somebody's basically shining a floodlight into someone else's backyard or property or bedroom or something. So I appreciate y'all's hard work on it, and I'm ready to move it forward.
Councilmember Wilson?
What constitutes, and this is just a curiosity, a complaint-based ordinance? Like?
And how many do we have?
Yeah, this is curious, and it's because of something else we've been working on. But, I mean, is it just you've decided internally that you're just, we're, I mean, we're not going to drive around, obviously, looking for us. But what in the ordinance says that we won't do that? Is there anything?
Well, it specifically says it's on a complaint basis.
Complaint-based, so you just write that into the ordinance? Okay, this is just curious for another topic, sorry.
It says it should.
The ordinance says, you know.
Yeah, I don't have the ordinance.
Should be enforced on a complaint basis upon evidence.
Okay, cool, cool. Thanks. That's interesting.
Councilmember, question?
I think when we discussed this in community planning, I had mentioned we have, I've gotten some concerns. I'm not even sure which park it is right at this moment, where our own park lights, judge, didn't escape. That our floodlights are, from our parks are causing the same light pollution. And I, I brought that up in community planning, and I did, right? So I think our next step was to look at that. Did I ever get back to you with an address?
Not sure.
Well, I think Sean O'Leary actually addressed that.
Sean did, okay.
But I can check the tenants who really are.
Okay.
No.
I'm sorry, I missed the question. But what I can tell you is that the current sports lighting technology is much more advanced than it used to be, and the spill and glare is far reduced from what it used to be, which we require whenever we do a new project.
Have we gone back and looked at our older 60-plus city parks to make sure that those lights are doing the same thing? Because I, we're clearly getting complaints about our own park lights spilling. And so have we looked at the older ones?
We haven't retrofitted them out, if all of them know. Some of them have been, but many have not.
Jane, does this apply to city property lights? I mean, we're talking about commercial residential, but does this apply to non-residential owned, does this apply to us or public?
Does R1 and R2?
Just those, is that a zoning type thing, not necessarily owners?
Somebody specifically asked that question at CPTC, and Sean O'Leary was here, and he responded that there have been a couple complaints, and that we've gone out and we've shielded some of the lights.
That's what I was going to say. I mean, I know for a fact, because I did something in Word 4, where if somebody complains, I think, that's what I was going to say, that if you get the address and give it to Sean, they'll go out there and they'll put a shield up, or they'll spray the side of the, the fixture deal, the lens deal, so that it doesn't go into the person's property, but it stays out on the road. And we have, the city has the ability to do that, and they have done it. And Sean's people, street maintenance, wherever that division is, they know how to do it. But they'll only go out there and do it if somebody complains. This doesn't technically.
Didn't technically address that situation.
Well, it's, it's the same, by analogy, we do what we're asking neighbors to do in this ordinance. If somebody complains that a park light's getting into their house or a street light's getting into their house, we, the city, will go out there and shield it. We're, now we're putting in ordinance that if a neighbor complains about another neighbor shining a light into their property and complain, now the city will ensure that the neighbors resolve that issue, and they stop shining a light into each other's property by shielding it or something.
Sounds like kind of a personal civil matter between neighbors. I'm not sure we can get involved, but I'm not that big of a, Councilmember, bear minute's question.
Kind of tangentially to what Councilmember Wilson was asking, is it common for us to have complaint-based ordinances? And do you have, in the planning department, any idea kind of how many have this kind of structure where it is complaint-based?
I think all of them are, pretty much.
Well, we get the complaints, we go out and we look at them. So this wouldn't be proactive, so we wouldn't be driving around looking, because we're not around after five typically. So that wouldn't be possible. But, right. I mean, if somebody calls in and has a complaint about something, we send code out and they look to see what the violation is.
Are there ordinances that we are proactive on? Do you think of any ordinances that we are proactive?
Code enforcement in the central area.
Drives around and looks for violations.
I was going to say parking tickets. But I mean, I mean specifically having that mechanism in the ordinance where it says it's complaint-based.
I don't know. I'll have to look that up and see. I'm not familiar with anything, and I don't know that there's anything that specifically says this is done on a complaint basis.
Or would this be the first one?
Your recent air discussions on short-term rentals were set up that way. That's what you all determined that would be on a complaint basis. Now, that hasn't been adopted yet, but you're getting to the end of that.
And what it does is affect the discretion of responding to the issue where it's not specified. It could be nonetheless administratively enforced on a complaint basis. But this and this ordinance makes it clear that that's how it's going to go forward, and it gives, I guess, a little bit more predictability to the property owners when they're making those changes, that, you know, they're not going to have to go necessarily get this checked by the city before they install it, but they could be subject to it if it becomes an issue for someone who qualifies.
Great. Appreciate that.
Jane, any other questions or comments? If not, I think we have time to schedule a first read and sounds.
Yeah, February 12th and February 26th.
All right, I'm going to try for the fifth time. Motion to adjourn?
Oh, second that stuff. I'll be there.
See you Thursday.
Right.